I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Adderall School Committee of Monday, October 30th, 2017. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. I'm going to start tonight with our Spotlight event, which is on The Big Read, and I'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Lori Regan to introduce our guests.
Thank you Chairman Weathers. So tonight, we're delighted to have Joan Pilkington Smith from the library, Sue Casey from the art teacher from Coelho Middle School, Kelly Bergeron, an English Language Arts teacher from Coelho Middle School, and Isla Santoro, as well as Gina.
Jessa Flores.
Jessa Flores. So if you would like to come on up to the screen.
You want to say something too? Because you look so pretty.
Hi folks. We have one missing child, but that's okay. Maybe she'll find her way through. If not, we can have the girls make up for her part. So I want to first of all thank Joan for all of her work with The Big Read. It's always been a passion of me, myself, integrating the arts with The Big Read, and we've always just always done a great job at trying to find a book if it's not grade level appropriate for our middle school students, but to find someone, something that might be. So we, so Ms. Bergeron and myself, Kelly, put together a project that we integrated both ELA and art with The Big Read. And we, let me just if I can get through here a little bit. We started off by looking at some of the quotes from Station 11, which was our Big Read this year. And my students in the eighth grade responded by reading The Giver. So The Giver was an eighth grade read over the summer as part of the Build a Better Community. And my students worked with the whole idea, the notion of, if you haven't read the book, it's the whole story about Jonas, the main character, and how the society doesn't see color and they don't have feelings. And then kind of what the society starts to see once, what's he, what, once he starts to see color, what he sees. So my students focused on the landscapes in the middle and then talked about, you know, what he, what the community was seeing with some of the quotes that were integrated into the work. So here we have the, some of the quotes from both The Giver and Station 11. And next, Kelly Bergeron and myself, we've done some work in the past with some, bringing the kids on the GATRA bus, which we found was very easy to do from Coelho. And I'm going to give Kelly a chance to talk about that. But we, we looked at Seed Folks, which we had done last year as part of a seventh grade read, and we thought there was a nice connection between both of those books, so.
So the connection, and it was a similar connection last year with The Big Read, was this idea of community and what a community looks like and what a community should be in an ideal community. So Station 11 obviously is a dystopian novel, but even after the virus, these little communities form and how those people help each other out and interact in the communities. Seed Folk is more about like an inner-city community that is very kind of segregated, it's very run down, it's a dangerous place, but they come together to create a community garden, which really brings the community together and they learn about each other and about the backgrounds of the different characters. So the connection that we made between the two was this idea of community, which we then tied together with our trip out into the Attleboro community. Let me go to the next one. So another thing that we did with the Seed Folk, because they built a community garden, we wanted to build our own little community garden in the classroom. So the students planted marigolds to create this community garden. And the reason we chose the marigold, which Isla will speak to a little bit as well, the unit we're working on also focuses on symbolism within the text. So we, I chose the marigold because of the symbolic nature of how it is a companion plant and it helps other plants to grow and thrive. So that's the window with our little community garden. So the marigold was symbolic because, you know, what helps you grow and thrive in your community? And Isla can speak a little bit about an essay she wrote. So they had to write an essay about who their marigold was, someone in the community that helped them grow, helped them thrive. So Isla, do you want to talk about what you said?
Yeah, so I wrote an essay about who my marigold is. And I said, so I play soccer and my marigold was my soccer coach, Coach Carrie, because she gives my soccer team little like sayings to help us improve on soccer, like soccer's not a walking sport and you have six seconds to get the ball back if you lose the ball. And she also encourages us and she just helps me like be positive and be joyful and happy to be at soccer.
So this was some, some pictures from when we visited the community garden on our adventure out into the community. And a quote from Seed Folks about this character who realizes that he might not be able to change a lot, but he can change that one, the vacant lot where they build the community garden. So he feels empowered by it to help out his community and help change. And that's some of the kids at the community garden. It was quite a rainy day and we were walking all around, but it kind of, I thought it made it a little bit more fun. Some more, Ms. Isla, that's the community garden. And just a basket for donations for the community, which we thought was really cool for people to sort of come together and do something positive with the produce that they were growing and creating. Also, all throughout the garden are marigolds. So they got to see what actual marigolds look like and how people actually do use them in their little plots to help the other plants grow. So that's kind of just cool for them.
So our next stop, so we, we took the bus, as I said, from Coelho down to the downtown by the train station. So we walked to the community garden and then we walked to the Attleboro Art Museum, where they had an exhibit called Calm Before the Storm. And the artists were, one of the, both books, which was quite ironic, brought up this whole idea of snow. And snow was, came up a few times in the The Big Read book, Station 11. So this was an artist's response to, to the snow globe. So the kids got a really nice opportunity to walk around with the program coordinator, Abby Rivaldi, to talk about the different artists' interpretation of this idea, this main idea. And Abby's work is in the background and she's, kind of her claim to fame is that she's been featured on the, at the GATRA bus quite a bit. So that was, if you've seen the bus occasionally, you'll see one of them has her, or a few of them have her work on it. So here's a couple of our guys that are looking a little bit closer at Abby's work and kind of, kind of breeze through these a bit. But it just gives you, the kids had an opportunity to kind of reflect on which pieces they, that kind of spoke to them the most. And these are a few of the quotes from our kids. We always do in our family, a high and a low, and Ms. Bergeron does a rose and a thorn. So we had the end of the day to sit and think quietly about kind of their highs. And the lows mostly were being wet because it was such a stormy day. But one of the ironic parts is City Hall welcomed us to have our lunch there because there was nowhere else to have it. And it really made a big impact on the kids to even have their lunch in council chambers, so. So we went back and we started looking at the idea of a snow globe. So the kids did some artwork. This was the whole four-person eighth grade team and, I'm sorry, seventh grade team. And this is one of our students' close-up. And so we kind of talked, if I can go, if I can go back on this, let me see, about this whole idea of no more, no more, what you might not have anymore in the event of a utopian outbreak. In this, in this case, it was a virus. But in the same time, which was, what was happening is these storms, and one of our young ladies couldn't make it tonight. She was, we asked the kids, how many of you have been affected by the hurricanes? And a lot of the kids had relatives in both Texas and Florida. And one of our young ladies had a, actually had a friend that had to come up and live with them. She, they lost their entire home. So she really felt very strong about telling her story. And I feel badly that she missed out on that tonight. But I'm going to let Jessa talk a little bit about her piece. This is Jessa and her lovely artwork. So Jessa?
Well, my piece is mostly inspired by the field trip. When we went on the field trip, like we saw a painting from Station 11 that was featured in Station 11, the GATRA buses. And it really made me think of what I would do during apocalypse. And I knew that I would need my dog there because I, I know that my, I can always trust my dog. So we were like, so it's mostly based off of that. And also, in when we were going through the museum, I saw a snow globe and it was titled Something Into Nothingness. And it was basically black leather covering the whole snow globe and like covering everything inside of it. And that reminds me of how our human race isn't really prepared for that and prepared for anything, viruses. We would all crumble and how dependent, like, and we're all dependent on each other. So when I was making my drawing, I really thought of that. And I thought of all like how the industries would fall down, our civilization, and it would all just be everyone for themselves.
Yes. Ms. Jessa? And this is Grace, our last young lady with a close-up of her piece, so. I want to thank our presenters, the girls, and I want to thank you all for having us tonight and hopefully we can take our.
Joan is going to say a few words as well.
Joan?
This is exactly what we're trying to do in the community. I can almost cry because this is unbelievable, the work you've done. You have some awesome teachers who can bring this out with you and take a community life project and bring it to an experience that helps you understand. The Big Read's been going on for 11 years. It's all-consuming for two months for some of us. Sue's been involved in the committee. Lori's been there. Donna Goldstein's a member of the committee now. You're a curriculum coordinator. Dave and Lori have been extremely supportive. I'm amazed at how much the schools are doing. The high school has 75 copies of the book. They're going to be doing some work with it. We just had our dinner last week that the kids created out of locally grown foods because that's all you would have to do. But looking at this and the impact, I think you ladies are going to remember this. And we hear that over and over, and that's just phenomenal. So I can't thank your staff anymore for what they do each year. It's just amazing and I'm humbled by this. This is, this is wonderful. It makes it worth it, no matter how tired I am today. This makes it worth it. Thank you very much.
Well, good. Thank you, Joan. Lori, you just did all the best, or? That's okay. I don't know if you are.
Yeah. So thank you, thank you Joan for the words. And I echo a lot of what you, what you said. And thank you for all the work on The Big Read. It's a very important community event and I'm glad and proud that the schools can take an active role in getting, really getting involved with them and getting the students involved in making a really relevant learning experience. So thank you for the work you do in the, in the program itself and to the teachers and students. Job well done, once again. Any questions or comments, Mr. Larson?
Young ladies, I think you did a great job. I mean, your pictures are beautiful. I love the idea that we're getting you out of the classroom and engaging out in the community. And for, for everybody that made that happen, all I can say is thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guiness?
Thank you. To go after, go off of Mr. Larson's comments, I see Mr. Bowles sitting back there and it was, it was great to watch him proudly see this slideshow happen.
I'm very proud of all of that. You do a phenomenal job and I'm really excited to see these paths go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, to state the painfully obvious, as Mr. Larson just said, you know, this, this type of community engagement, this type of relevant learning experiences, there's, there's reasons we have these in our vision statement and our mission statement. And you guys did a great job with it. And your, your teachers are doing a great job putting it to good use for us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
I love how you ladies have found your own marigolds within your community. And I think the other piece of this is to grow yourselves as marigolds, right? That the way a community thrives is if we're all looking to enhance the lives of others. And I'm sure you do that on a, on a daily basis with your classmates. So don't, don't lose the message of this book. It's not just a seventh grade. And again, once again, thank you to the library for being a partner in this. It, you know, it's, it's an off-used phrase, but I think it's so true, is it takes a village or it takes a, a village in your case, but a community. And, you know, it's really exciting to see the growth of these types of projects. And I know from teaching myself, it's, it's a lot of energy. It takes a lot of time and investment to do, but I think that you get that on the back end with like how engaged you see your students. And when we get to the point where this is the way that school is done at Attleboro, we'll know we'll be successful. And I just want to help, thank you for continuing to move that forward and encouraging your colleagues and your classmates to really dig in and to, to make this what school is really like in Attleboro. So again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Top one.
Top one.
Yep, top one.
All right, Mr. Perry, you have our Student Advisory Council update.
How you guys doing today? Good, how are you? Good? All right, so I'll usually stand, but that's why I want to, you guys can see back here, right? Yes. All right, so there's current events going on. All right, so elementary schools, so on October 30th to November 3rd, so today's the third, we book for at Willett and Hill Roberts. And then tomorrow, 31st, the dentist at Hill Roberts. On November 1st, early release for elementary only for parent teacher conferences. And then same thing, same thing the next day. It's supposed to be a second, but parent teacher conferences the next day too. And then November 5th, skate night for Hill Roberts. And then November 9th, there's going to be a community fundraiser at Sky Zone for Willett. And then for more for elementary schools, so November 8th, there's a PTO meeting for Thatcher. And then the 9th, reading conferences due to Hill Robert, reading calendars are due and that's for Hill Roberts. On November 10th, there's no school for, and that's because of Veterans Day. Middle schools, so the 1st of November is going to be initial gift card fundraisers deadline and that's for Coelho. On November 7th, picture retake day, that's for Coelho also. Same with, another thing for Coelho, Veterans Day Assembly and that's the 8th. And then there's going to be no school for, no school also for the 10th because of Veterans Day. For high school, so on November 5th is Fast Fun Information Day. And then November 8th to 9th is NCAS ELA retest. November 10th, no school, Veterans Day. And the 1st to 17th, there's going to be a Leo Club canned food drive around the community. So it's going to be an AICPAC meeting. November 16th, AICPAC table at Attleboro High School, Blue Pride Night. And December 1st is going to be a special event. And then, so there's details to follow. So probably, as late, meetings coming up, we'll get more information about it. And then for our update, so we, we didn't make too much progress these past couple weeks because we've been, at our meetings, we've been helping out student council for Pumpkin Glow. But the meeting before, then another one we did, we had like Halloween themed one. But so we're still trying, we're still encouraging people for the green. We're still trying to figure out like how we're going to implement that to start recycling and just get like more like, and like, these people, just get like the students more like thinking about recycling instead of just throwing whatever into the recycle bin and using it as a trash can. Then we're going to discuss with the SAC group, we're trying to raise money to support the green ideas. So we're still thinking about how like we can go beyond and just say, do this. And then we're still continuing to advocate for the new school. And that's presentation.
Mr. Quinn?
Mr. Perry, thank you. You and Mr. Lancaster do a really nice job with these annual reports. One question that I had is, or just maybe a little bit of homework for our next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm curious if you can think about what you would need from us.
Okay.
To help you advocate, better advocate for the new high school. And in particular, kind of long-term, and maybe this is for, you know, maybe a month from now because we're, we're getting close to where we're going to have to make the moves.
Yeah.
To get a sense of how many of your fellow classmates would be willing to help and what.
Yeah.
And so between those two pieces of information, I think would be really useful, you can reach out to myself or any one of the committee members.
Yeah, thank you.
But I think what would be helpful is just to know what, what we can do to support you.
Okay.
Because you've got, I know you've got a lot on your plate. Did you, do you play a sports sport?
Yeah, football.
Football. Still a lot of games left to play. Thanksgiving coming up. But how, how we can make the best use of your very limited time. Because I think you and your fellow students are really valuable assets.
Yeah.
And, but we also need to be able to support you. So any kind of report on what you need from us.
Okay.
And then just a kind of a gauge, maybe a month from now.
Yeah.
But how many students are interested in participating would be really helpful for this committee.
All right, thank you.
And it would also move you towards your goal.
Thank you.
So thank you again for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
All right, moving on to our business agenda for tonight. Item number one is the NCAS presentation by our Assistant Superintendent Lori Regan.
Yeah, so I'd like to also ask Ms. DeSimone as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Let's see, let's close out of this one. Okay. So tonight's presentation is on the past school year's assessment and accountability. So I'd like to start off with a quote, and it is Travels with Charlie in Search of America, John Steinbeck stated, "Many a trip continues long after movement and time and space have ceased. Tonight's presentation is the beginning of a new educational journey in Attleboro. The theme for tonight is road trips, which of course involve maps." So in tonight's presentation, we're going to focus on how we got on the current path, what the data says, what it means, how we compare, what we've learned, and then what lies in store for us in the future. And along the way, I've included question breaks. Certainly if you have questions along the way, let me know, but I, please know that I have built those in ahead of time. So as the slide, as the slide is entitled, Twists and Turns abound, indeed. There have been many changes along the way over the last five years in Attleboro public schools. Of note, we've had three standardized tests and two different methods of taking those tests. So we start in, oop, yeah, sorry, new clicker. Am I going back? Yeah. We start in 2013 and 14 and progress all the way up to that we are here with the red star and all of the different variations that we've had in testing. Along the way, we've gone from a total paper-based testing method to computer-based testing. Computer-based testing has been around since 2014, so it's certainly not new. Of note, this school year, grade 10 will still take the paper-based test, but then in school year 2018 and 2019, all grades will migrate towards the computer-based testing. So at this point in the.
Quick question about the computer-based. What, if any, issues did you have with computer-based testing? Any glitches, issues that encounter? Was it pretty much smooth sailing or just so few that it was just non-reportable?
Yeah, with our new infrastructure.
Yeah.
We didn't have any, I mean, we had some minor glitches.
Yeah, okay.
But with the new infrastructure in place, it made the testing environment very smooth.
Okay, thanks.
That's good. Okay. So here, you know, on the road trip, you know that what, you're always going to get asked, are we there yet? So this is definitely not here. In fact, we're going to find that this slide tends to lead to some questions. So the challenge here is to find coherent between, coherence between three very different standardized testing. So there's three different standardized tests, three different scales, and three different groups of achievement levels. So what this slide shows is roughly how NCAS, sorry. How NCAS 1.0, or also called the legacy NCAS, maps to the, the park testing. So in NCAS 1.0, we went from four achievement levels to parks, five achievement levels. And you'll notice that there are some diagonal lines moving from the NCAS 1.0 to the park. And you'll notice that there are no lines from park to the next generation NCAS. That is very intentional. The new next generation NCAS is a completely different test. There is no mapping to previous tests. So the challenge here is indeed to find coherence, to find that current message and theme throughout many years of testing. So that begs the question, why a new test? Because today's workforce requires strong problem-solving and critical thinking strategies combined with solid written communication skills and oral communication skills, colleges and universities have modified their curriculums and methods of teaching. So that obviously has rolled down to the K through 12 arena and driven change. Of note, NCAS as originally configured, as Bullet 3 points out, was designed to ensure a basic level of knowledge and literacy for high school graduates. It's important to know now that one-third of students passing, who pass the NCAS and graduate from Massachusetts Public Schools do require some college remediation classes. So change was needed. So what exactly does next generation mean? All of the bullet points are really important here. Next generation primarily means that it's measuring very rigorous standards in a different way. It is all computer-based testing. There's a much stronger alignment to the Massachusetts learning standards and there are new item test, test types that focus, they tend to drill down and assess very deeply skills and knowledge. And again, we, we see that the critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, and the ability to make the connections between reading and writing. It is also important to note that, that the whole purpose behind NCAS is really to measure a student's readiness for their next grade level, or if they're in 12th grade, for that next leap for them, whether that be college or career. Now, when I look at this map, I think of an amusement park ride. I'm not sure if you guys think of that as well. But it looks like a really fun ride. But what it really shows is how proficiency rises sharply as the grades level, as the grade levels increase. So if I can orient you just for a minute down at the bottom here, because we need to make sure that we understand what this slide is trying to tell us, that the first few bars here are ELA bars, English Language Arts. And they range from grade three to grade 10. The next sequence of bars is for math, also grades three through grades 10. And then the last three bars are the science that students take in grades five, eight, and 10. And basically, what's happening here is that the higher the grade, the higher the grade level gets, the longer the green bar, which represents advanced, and the longer the proficient bar gets. So it's, it's looking like, right? If you're reading the, the graph accurately, that the, the higher the grade level of the student, the higher the. the higher the level of it proficiency in advanced gets. And that's across ELA, math, and, um, and science and technology. That's the old M-CAS. Looks very different than the slide that I'm about to show you. This is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's new map. This looks like a nice, smooth ride, kind of boring ride if you were at an amusement park. Um, but this is how grades three through eight show just about the same levels of proficiency. Um, what this tends to show is that, um, scores hover around the 50% or the, the median, in this case, that mark, shows a, uh, increased coherence, um, in grades three through eight, ELA, and math.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess, uh, my, my question is, is why? Like trying, and maybe you're going to get to this, but I'm packing, because I've had conversations with my own district, and I'm still trying to wrap my head around. You know, I, I know that these scores are supposed to mirror, at least within a few percentage points, what the Massachusetts performance looks like on the NAEP data.
Right.
And what I'm trying to figure out is, and not, not trying to get into the weeds, but, but I think this is important, because ultimately, this is a reflection of a cut score that a group of people decided to make. Right? And so the question to me underlying this is, is that, did we try to create a bell curve here? So that no matter what, that we're going to have 50% of the kids, you know, uh, not meeting expectations? Because depending on where you, you put the cut score, you know, you could put a cut score at, let's say, 90% correct. And then everybody below that. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out where kind of the divergence of, my understanding from, if you can go back to that last slide, that each grade level created their own cut score? Is that correct on the previous M-CAS? Or where was the, can you dive into, or anybody on the administrative team? That it was like sixth grade teachers decided what the, the cut score for proficiency was? I guess, what, what explains that, that discrepancy?
Um, well, this was, this, these are results from, um, from the, the old legacy. And what it showed was that it was not meeting, um, students being, graduating from 12th grade, being ready for college or career readiness. So you're right.
Just to-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, continue your statement.
Oh, it, it shows your, so when we get to the new map, indeed, only 50% are, um, are going to be in, um, the meeting expectations or, um, exceeding expectations. As far as to why that line was drawn in this, the proverbial sand, the way it was, um, I, I don't know. I don't know why it was, um, drawn like that, but it is expected to change. That is one thing that, um, that was seen with the legacy, um, M-CAS, is that, um, that as time went on, the levels of, uh, proficient and advanced did increase. Any other insights on that?
If you go back to the other slide, one second. So this shows that the, the level of expectation for students to be proficient goes up and down almost for every single grade level. They, so for example, the grade four ELA, which is the first bar all the way to the left, appears to be, or the level of expectation to meet proficiency appears to be more rigorous than the grade 10 ELA, um, score. And so this is just demonstrating how there was no consistency before in the legacy M-CAS. But now with this new form of, or this new next generation M-CAS, they're trying to make it so that the, um, level of expectation in order to meet proficiency is the same across the board.
And, but that, that sameness has consequences.
Correct.
Right, and, and unintended or unintended consequences. One thing, and I'll, I'll say this before I jump off my soapbox. And I know that this has been reported by DESI, but the, the one-third remediation, and Rob, maybe you could speak to this a little bit better, because then you're, I know you're in the community college. There's a bit of controversy in terms of what that figure is. That's based on Accuplacer test scores, which doesn't take into account the student's ability to advocate for how hard they're going to work in that class. It's what they remember when they go for their placement exams. So I, I guess I, you know, and there's been, uh, I think the Columbia one's what I'm calling to mind right now, is that there's been questions about how accurate that figure really is. And in terms of pushing this rigor. So I guess I just, from a personal standpoint or philosophical standpoint, um, I just didn't want that point. Uh, and I know DESI has been sending it all along, but from a personal standpoint.
Right.
I, I guess I call that, I call that figure into question in terms of how much that, that reality, really exists for students who, you know, uh, are, are labeled in need of remediation.
Just to clarify, at this point, we're talking about statewide?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Geddes?
Uh, before I get to, to my point, to Mr. Quinn's point about the Accuplacer test, at least BCC is considering moving away from the Accuplacer test a little bit. Um, for the last few years, we've looked at some of our bigger schools, Attleboro High School being one of them, and, uh, comparing students' GPA in high school math classes with their Accuplacer scores to, as to which may be a better indicator of their performance in a college-level ma- math course. And the results are such that, starting this year, we are actually moving to, we're, we're expanding that sample size to, uh, some, we, we're going from nine to, I think, 25 high schools that we're going to be looking at that for. So, um, so, agreed. But, uh, going back to the other slide, just because I know at home sometimes these graphs can be difficult to read with the, um, with the fine print. It's important to note that this is, this, the lines that are going across the bars should not be read like the Dow Jones. This is, um, the, we, we want, uh, we want those lines going downward because the, the green and yellow at the top are the proficiency and exceeding expectations.
Right.
Um, the lines are following the, the, the cut score that, that Mr. Quinn was speaking about. So it's, so it's, it's okay that those look like they have a downward trajectory. They're actually in, in increase to, to what you're saying. I just, just because visually-
An increase in proficiency in advanced.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
Just, just because visually, when I first looked at it, I was like, what did, what's she talking about that's going on?
Indeed, yeah.
But, yeah, so just for clarification purposes, thank you.
Okay, super.
Mr. Storrs, I think one more question.
Well, for this one, my first question is, is this one year or is this the same group? The same, um, what's the term you guys always use for the-
Cohort.
Cohort, thank you. Same cohort over their, their years in school?
Uh, this slide was provided by, um, uh, the-
DESI?
Yeah, by DESI, so.
So who knows?
I, I, yeah.
Can you go to-
Honestly, don't know.
Fair enough. Could you go to the next slide, please? So with this one, if I'm reading it right.
This is also a DESI slide. I'm going to show you our district.
But I'm effectively understanding, this is, is saying approximately 50% of the students in Massachusetts are, um, not meeting, um, or, uh, progressing towards meeting.
That you're reading it correctly.
And every year, it's always going to be the same. So effectively, they're going out of their way, give or take. We, we expect that'll change?
It, yes. So, um, on a few conference calls that we were on, that question was absolutely raised. So you're on target to be, um, alerted to that. The representative from, um, from DESI did say that they were expecting changes, just like they saw in the legacy, um, M-CAS. And so the ideal would be to increase, um, what is now the, uh, meeting expectations and exceeding expectations over time. As students become more familiarized with the, the standardized testing and the, the increased rigor of the next generation M-CAS, that we should see those top two, um, bars, the orange and the green. We should start to see those increase as well. And, um, consequently, the red and the blue bars decrease.
They have effectively raised the bar in terms of expectations. Starting point. As the, for the starting point, so that there's room for growth.
Right.
You know, under the legacy, you know, we had 92% scoring proficient or advanced. It doesn't leave you a lot of room for growth. I, I think that's the thinking, not necessarily defending it, but explaining it. And the, you know, the, the slide before, I mean, the key point was that proficient meant something different at different grade levels. You know, proficient in a fourth grade test doesn't mean the same thing as it does on a fifth grade test. And that was a problem that was always, uh, understood in the M-CAS. It, it made, you know, that, that cohort analysis difficult, because, you know, you could be proficient in one year and not in the next. And is that about what we're doing? Or is that about the fact that the tests are different?
And yet it was the same achievement scale, so.
So just to follow, what is in place now so that way that doesn't happen? Because I'm assuming that when the M-CAS first started off, did, did we follow a similar process or?
No.
Okay.
It was arbitrary.
All right, so each grade level set their own cut scores or like the different groups and that's?
So it is important to note on that, that, um, that Massachusetts educators, um, helped set the, literally set the bar, and that, um, and that the test, the next generation test, the standards were all set at the same time, unlike in the legacy. Move on, okay. So, um, this slide is super important. You may remember either fondly or not, you know, having that tough teacher, or had a reputation, right, for the tough teacher. I'm getting a smile, right? And, um, perhaps they were, but by the time you finished that class or by the time the year end, you really had learned a lot. And I think that that's the methodology that, um, that, uh, DESI is taking here. These results clearly do not mean that students learned less. It literally measures the results in a different way. It's important to note also that 2017 is a baseline year, um, so the first year of a new assessment. They do expect scores to change over time, as we've talked about. The scores also changed, uh, when the legacy M-CAS was debuted in 1998. Massachusetts educators were involved in this process all along the way, and they themselves raised this bar, um, to make sure that our students are, most importantly, ready for that next grade level, and if they're at that 12th grade, to be ready for college or career. Any more questions?
We beat you by a slide.
I think we did, yeah. Okay. So, um, so I'd like to first orient you to the, kind of the composition of the slides. So what you're going to see are s- slides that follow for grades three through eight for ELA and math. The blue, um, the blue bars are, um, APS bars, and the gray bars are for the state. ELA graphs will be on top, and math bars will be at the bottom. And what I've looked at, um, for these, um, in order to kind of draw an easy comparison, is to combine, um, the new, uh, meeting expectations and exceeding expectations for both ELA and math, and I've compared those against the state. So you'll see here that in grade three, um, we've exceeded the state, um, in both grade three ELA and math. The subgroups, um, again, just to explain the formatting, so you know, um, you know, uh, what my logic was behind these. I've highlighted five subgroups. Uh, the first subgroup is formerly limited English proficient. They're the green bar. You might hear me refer to those as FLEP. Uh, we if, have, uh, English language learners in the red bar. Sometimes those, um, groups, that group of students may be called ELL. Uh, we have the economically disadvantaged, um, students, uh, that, and they, that bar is represented in yellow. We have students with disabilities, and that bar is in black. And the high needs, uh, subgroup is in orange. And just to have a classification, um, high needs students belong to at least one of the following, uh, subgroups, uh, students with disabilities, ELL or FLEP, or economically disadvantaged. And all of the subgroups, I compared them against the state aggregate, which is kind of a lofty, um, comparison route, but just wanting to make sure that everybody, um, understands how these subgroups are performing. And then you'll see summary, uh, on the sides. I'm not going to, there's a lot of these slides, so I'm not going to read every single one. Please let me know if you have any questions on any of these. So in grade four, uh, we surpassed the state in ELA and tied the state in math. As far as, uh, the subgroup testing in grade four, here that is. And as we wrap up the M-CAS, uh, testing results in elementary schools, the next round of results will be, um, tailored around, uh, the five through eight, our middle school levels. Um, and I'd like to announce some really great news, um, for Attleboro Public Schools. So I've entitled this slide, High Honors. And I would like to, um, recognize Hyman Fine and Peter Thatcher. When we looked at the data, um, and grouped it by, uh, student growth percentile ranking of all schools, which comprised a group of 2,752 schools, who all took the next generation testing, Hyman Fine got third and eighth out of that list. And Peter Thatcher scored 63rd and 81st out of that list. So really, really great work by those educators and their administration. It's fabulous news. Uh, moving on to, uh, middle school levels. So here we have a grade five ELA in math, slightly below the state in ELA, and tied, uh, to the state in, um, in math. Here's the subgroup data. It's important to note here, too, that you will not see, uh, red bars here. And that is because the ELL subgroup was not large enough to report on. There were only six students in that group. So, um, there is no bar for them. Um, as we move through, uh, grades six, seven, and eight, um, we're going to see the state data starting to surpass our district data. The good news is that it's only by a few percentage points. But what that highlights for us is that, um, we still have to, we have work to do on this rigorous educational path. There's the grade six subgroup data. And grade seven for ELA and math. Grade seven subgroups. The FLEP group, um, pops up a lot, um, in the notes. They, um, either, uh, match the state quite a bit or surpass the state, um, in meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. Here in seventh grade, we see them matching the state in ELA, exceeding expectations, and approaching the state in math, um, exceeding expectations. And as we near the end of the next generation M-CAS results in grades five through eight, um, we see that we are, um, only slightly behind the state in combined meeting, um, expectations and exceeding expectations. And so now we're going to take an exit, uh, from our, uh, proverbial road trip, um, off the freeway, to highlight the progress made in, uh, grades five and eight, um, in science. Please remember that grades five and eight took the legacy M-CAS, um, in, um, in their respective grades, as did grade 10 at AHS. So here we see in grade five that we surpassed the state in grade five, advanced in proficient science. Good news to report there. Grade eight, we were, uh, tied with the state, again, in advanced and proficient.
So are this?
Yeah.
Just, something I think is worth pointing out is that the grade five and eight test, and correct me if I'm wrong, grade five includes all the content taught in grades three and four.
Excellent point.
Consists of six and seven. So we're, we're really cramming three years worth of content.
Exactly.
Into, you know, a, a one test. And I think that's important context for why this looks the way it is.
Right.
Across the board.
Right. And, um, and, and, and one of the reasons also that we won't see student growth percentiles for them as well. Yeah.
And this, so the science is going computer-based next year, correct?
Um, science is going computerized next year, um, but it will be the legacy test.
It'll be a legacy test for the computer.
Yes, but, but it will be the computer-based testing.
Do they have a timeframe for when a, the next generation science is going to be?
Yes.
And if you don't have that, I, I-
They, um, they do. And there was just a memo put out on that this week, um, so that it's in, in progress.
So at least for the year.
It's going to affect the class of 2021 and 2022.
Thank you.
Okay, and here are the results that compare subgroups to the state aggregate, um, in grades five and eight science. So much hard work and steady progress at AHS has resulted in a 92% rating of proficient and, and advanced in ELA for the last three consecutive years. That's, uh, very commendable work there. Did anybody see the movie or read the book Hidden Figures? About the, the three NASA mathematicians? So I have a quote, um, from, uh, from one of those mathematicians. Her name was Catherine Johnson. Her name was Katherine Johnson. She was a NASA mathematician for 33 years. They were actually categorized as human computers, which is kind of neat. So a related quote, she said, "We'll always have STEM with us. Some things will drop out of the public eye and will go away, but there will always be science, engineering, and technology. And there will always, always be mathematics." And as a former math teacher, I appreciated that quote. And as we see, our AHS 10th graders seem to have the same knack for math. They have shown an 80% average proficiency of, a rating of proficient or advanced for the last three consecutive years. And here's a look at their subgroup data. It's important to note here that students with disabilities, yes, finally, finally made some great progress against the state. They surpassed the state in the proficient rating in ELA and they matched the state in proficient rating in math. So, and there we see down at the bottom that the high needs, students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged met or surpassed state in, in the math proficient rating. And moving on to science, we see a 71% on average proficient and average, excuse me, proficient or advanced for the last three consecutive years. And a positive blip on the radar. Last year, they showed a 76% advanced or proficient rating. And here's a look at their subgroup data. So you might be asking yourself at this point, are we there yet? We're almost there, we're almost there. This graph is, again, is a reminder of where the state expected results to be across three through eight math and ELA. We'll notice that the scores, again, show that midpoint hovering around the 50%. So what do our scores show from last year? Well, our scores pretty much mirror what the state expected them to, to be. So just a brief orientation onto this slide. This is by the entire grade level. So the, the first two bars are grade three, Attleboro Public Schools, grade three straight. I'm sorry, grade three state. And then grade four, all the way up to grade eight. So what we see now is a clearer progression of learning expectations from grade to grade. There's no up and down. It's a pretty straight, very predictable path here. It's important to note that grades five and eight are, science are not included in these averages. And that is a change from your, your slideshow there. I forgot to change that. So please know that these averages are only next generation MCAS results. Moving on into the next part of our presentation is on accountability and assistance level. So in grades three through eight, we have kind of a unique rating and probably the only time that we'll have a no level status. That is because grades three through eight, much like grades three through eight across the Commonwealth participated in next generation MCAS testing. Attleboro High School was able to hold on to level two rating. And here's a snapshot of what we look like online. Very similar to districts, again, across the Commonwealth.
And that no level, again, is because there's no second year to measure it against?
That's right. That, so this is the baseline year. And so next year, we will have an accountability status for grades three through eight.
It is, is it true? Are they going to replicate the levels similarly to the current, like the, the bottom 20% of school or district?
From my understanding, there, there is going to be a five-level tiered hierarchy. There was something in a memo that I read that there, that might be changing.
Okay.
But this is a completely new year. So I think that they are leaving no stone unturned and they're really exploring every avenue, making sure that that next forward step is in its intended direction. Okay. So student growth percentile, what it is really is it describes a student's growth compared to other students with similar prior test scores. In other words, their academic career. The real sweet spot in SGP is between 40 and 60%. So if we look at our district and where our SGP's are, 66% of our scores are in grades three through 10 in ELA and math, are either classified as typical or high-growth areas. That leaves the remaining 33% that we have got some work to do. And we see a degradation of, again, grades three through 10 on this SGP scale. And now our destination is finally in sight. The last area to report on tonight is for access testing for English language learners. Their proficiency is scored in six levels. And here is the first of two slides showing their results. This slide shows from kindergarten to grade four. And one of the trends that I see on this graph is that as the grades increase, the number of higher leving, excuse me, of higher achieving levels there are. It's not the same group of kids. There are different kid, you know, kids in different grade levels, but certainly less entering and emerging as we progress up the grade levels. And the next slide shows grades five through nine. It's important to note here that there weren't enough students in grades 10 through 12 to report on. So there's only access testing results through grade nine. And we see a little bit of a different pattern here for the results that in K through four, we saw less entering and emerging, but we see their reemergence in grades eight and nine. So what are some of the highlights from tonight's slideshow? It can be seen that when Attleboro Public Schools is faced with new challenges, we step up to the plate. Attleboro teachers, students, parents, and staff responds positively and show growth. 42% of next generation subject area tested better than or equal to the state in meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So that left us with the remaining 58% where we have our work to do. We have our work cut out. The good news, the kind of the silver, silver lining in that cloud is that we only trailed about three percentage points on average. And let's not forget, Hyman Fine and Peter Thatcher scored us in the top 3% across the state, looking at SGP growth. Lot to be proud of. So we are headed in the right direction and in learning is at every curve. We've crossed over that first hurdle of having students take the next generation MCAS testing. We live in a really wonderful state. Massachusetts is widely seen as the best school system in the country. I pulled two quotes from two articles that I found online. One was from The Atlantic and one was from The Boston Globe. The first quote states, "The Bay State's famous successes are juxtaposed with stubborn achievement gaps and concentrations of poverty that have made across-the-board strides all but impossible." That kind of lends itself to a 92%, right? Progression, right, in proficient and advanced. It's just not good enough anymore. There's not enough room for growth. So now we see a shift is moving towards the other aspect of what children need in terms of their social-emotional learning. These include being engaged in school, learning more about themselves, and having access. So some future measures that I think that we'll be seeing next year as we sit around this table again, looking at this school year's data. We're going to be looking at chronic absenteeism, completion of ninth-grade coursework, and successful completion of a broad and challenging high school curriculum that absolutely includes AP courses. And I'd like to conclude with our final road sign for the night and that Attleboro Public Schools does equal a bright future ahead. And I look forward to reporting this year's results at this point next year. Questions?
Thank you very much for that in-depth presentation. I guess before I open up to questions from the committee members, does the administration have anything to add? Points to reiterate or not? Like I said, it was comprehensive, so you might not.
I just would like to say, like, our students are telling us something in this data and we need to look at that data, take that data seriously, and then have, use that to make instructional decisions. Again, it's only one data point. It's only one day. But the students are giving us some information and it's information that we can use moving forward.
I would just say that we strive to find the right balance where, you know, the, the data is treated with respect for what it means, but it is not inflated to mean, to, you know, take meaning from it that doesn't really exist or belong there. So, you know, it's, it's always a challenge to know exactly where that line really is. But that's what we try to do because, you know, we've, we've lived on putting too much emphasis on test scores and I think our strategic plan is, is real evidence that as a district, we want to have a balanced approach. But that does not mean ignoring data. And, you know, one test on one day is always a limited view of, of, of what, you know, how we're doing, but it's still a view and the one that we have to pay close attention to.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from committee members? Mr. Geddes?
I think I said during this same presentation last year, I'm by no means a fan of standardized testing for a lot of the reasons that you, that you just mentioned and for some of the reasons that Mr. Quinn talked about earlier. But, and especially with how maddening the, those first few slides were of how different, you know, and it seems like all three of those tests have been in use in my two years on this committee, which is exceptionally frustrating. But all of that being said, I did want to express a personal congratulations that it seems like, what was it, a month ago that we introduced you to this position?
Thank you, Mr. Geddes, yes, thank you.
Flushing all of this out for us. So, so very well done.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Right out of the frying pan and into the fire with this. So, good job, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Quinn?
I just want to echo Mr. Geddes's comments. Ms. DeSimone, you, you jumped right into the frying pan. And this is, you know, new job, new assessment data, trying to make sense and trying to make it digestible for the community. I, I think that you did a really excellent job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I think, you know, to kind of piggyback off of what the administration said, you know, this is like any sort of indicator, like if you got health, you know, you, you want to, you don't want your blood pressure too low, you know, you got to treat it like it's one indicator, but that doesn't mean that you're healthy if your blood pressure is perfect.
Indeed.
So it's just one story. And I think if we don't do a good job of telling the other stories like we did this morning and that becomes, I mean, excuse me, earlier in this meeting, this too often becomes the defining characteristic of a school district. And I know that we're working really hard with the consortium to broaden that because, you know, this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Regan doesn't tell us anything about our students' creativity, their entrepreneurial mindset, their ability to collaborate, how artistic they are, their passions. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things that this test doesn't tell us. And I think we, those are all things that we really value as community members and citizens who want, you know, well-educated populace to, you know, advance our, our society. So I, I think, I feel very confident in this administration that will make sense of this data, but also keep it in its proper context because there are side effects that we don't talk about in terms of chasing high test scores. You know, we may increase test scores, but if we kill a student's love to read, have we really done them justice? So I appreciate all the efforts that are going on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, MSBA update. Not too much new to report since we all saw each other last Thursday at the city council chambers for their special meeting. In the presentation by Castle Booze and Superintendent, the plans continue to be refined. They are close to being ready to submit to the state. There is an SBC meeting on Wednesday of this week in this room, at which time it's expected that the SBC will vote to approve and authorize the submission, this, the submission to the state for their December board meeting, which, if all went as we hoped, would keep us on the same timeline that we've been talking about for months now. But other than that, big item, obviously, there's, there's nothing new to report. Any questions? Alright. Next, also potentially briefly circulated in, with your materials was proposed agreement with the clerical local 653 union for years two, 2017 to 2020. This agreement, like I said, was circulated with the materials. It keeps in line with the fiscal parameters that we've set for our other contracts and negotiations. And so at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next minutes from our, no, excuse me, October 16th, 2017 meeting, the minutes were circulated with your materials. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda tonight. Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $127.80 from the Booster Club to the AHS class of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $200 from CAI Software LLC to the Attleboro Robotics Club.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation of 50 yoga mats for an estimated value of $500 from Empower Fitness and Uxbridge to the Studley Elementary School for student use.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $600 from the Hyman Fine PTO to be used for technology in the music classrooms.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to deem the elementary food service line equipment as described in the October 30th memorandum as surplus. The estimated scrap value is less than $1,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our consent agenda. Subcommittee reports tonight, just briefly. I am pinching for Mrs. Scales today and just noting that the items that were tabled, that went into the table last meeting, will now be removed from the table and go into effect. That is Mrs. Scales' following personnel report. Moving on, open forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the committee at open forum? Alright, that will close open forum. We do not need to enter into executive session as indicated on the agenda. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.